Bill Galper, District 13.
Jim Love, District 14.
Mike Schellberg, District 6.
Mark Riley and Justin Hardresky.
And Courtney, introduce yourself because you're representing the Good Doctor, right?
Yes, Courtney Armstrong, the coordinator of Project Save Lives.
Okay, good deal. And coming through the door, only...
Mike Inspechule.
Five and a half minutes late, Chief Counselor. Chief, you get the reward seat. Get to sit up here next to me, Chief, come on. That's right. Okay. Courtney, you got the microphone, is it working?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hi, Chief. All right, well, let's give some updates.
So, so far, Project Save Lives has worked with 109 individuals from the EDs. We have, we have seen 164, but 48 of them refused services and some of those have passed before we have... We can work with them. Seven. And 48 refused, which led us with 109 individuals. Of those 109, none have died from opioid-related overdosees. And only three have been repeat overdoses.
Sure. Can I help you out, though? People that have refused or passed, do you know what their situation has to come?
Do not, because they have not signed consent, so we cannot follow up.
Anyone else? Are we still following up on people who refuse?
If they've refused, they have not signed a consent for us to follow up.
So, you can't call them yet? Because there was one state, I mean, there was one entity in the state that was actually doing that, though. Once they refused, they still...
There's implied consent, so if we can get them to give us these working information to contact them, then we can.
Okay, I get it.
And of the 109, how many, the outcomes of those 109 individuals? Statistics?
Of the 109, only three have been repeat overdoses. And we've had zero deaths related to opioids.
Zero, okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely. Through the chair, help me out, of the three repeats, have they come back in the program?
They have, we have re-engagement back with peers, yes.
And in terms of timeframe, which day last round repeated, when you signed them and they got a call, they, their repeat, how long did it take them to repeat?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
So, what is your analysis of why they repeated?
We do follow them for six months, I can say that.
Pardon me?
We do follow them for six months, I can say that. We've had numerous people that have refused, like one individual...
Now, let's go back to three that refused, no, no, excuse me, three that repeat.
Yes.
And you followed up and said, what did we do right or what did we do wrong to find out what happened and why they repeated?
We do, but I don't have that information with me today.
Okay. And, but is there an age or anything in particular that, or common to the three? It's not a very great group. There's nothing, nothing... Thank you. Anyone else? The audience, I think they got a question about, specific to that, Project Save Lives and the current outcome. Yes, sir?
So, we run into a problem of not being able to...
Identify yourselves.
Oh, I'm sorry. James Landy, Enzo P Foundation, 103rd Street. We're running into a problem where we're trying to take people to Gateway. We've been doing it for two years, and now there's so many people there that nobody's getting in. So, for two years, we've been doing this, and out of 25 people we took, they took 22 of them. Last 10 people, I think, have all been turned away except one person, and she went from 10 milligrams of Suboxone to 8 milligrams, and they released her. So, we couldn't get her into a rehab facility because she's on this medicine. So...
Courtney, you have any idea what's going on at Gateway?
So, Katie, because I have a waitlist of individuals, since Mike and Press switched throughout the city with various different people providers. This permits specifically, it's trying to work in the emergency, it's running across the city, we began it last week, last Thursday, and we were trying to set up a city-wide fed or care coordination system.
Which is what we originally talked about, that we need to furnish that information throughout the community. Gateway, if somebody else is slammed full and can't handle somebody, we need to have some alternatives if they're available, right? That we'll look into, okay? Yes, sir?
My name is Mike Aloya, I represent American Hearts Radio Network. And I'm here for a couple reasons. First off, about substituting one drug for another is not the way and the solution. I am a living testimony that you can get clean by faith. I've been clean 16 years. There needs to be an option for faith-based drug rehabilitation free.
Sir...
Also, Gateway...
Let me stop you right there for a moment. We're not arguing the fact that you may, may, make a good point about alternatives and options. Our program was to save lives.
I understand.
That was what we said we were going to do. We also recognize the need to expand services and go beyond what we were going, what we are challenged to do.
I understand.
We looked at the statistics, we saw over 400 deaths due to drug overdose. Unfortunately, that number is still climbing, so while I appreciate what you're saying, that's not the focus right now...
Well, you mentioned Gateway, sir, and...
No, I didn't mention Gateway. There was a gentleman raised the issue about them being full-full, and that's not...
Well, there's also people that are being turned away, and that's because of facial wounds from the drug, okay? My soulmate died last week, and she was turned away from Gateway. Her name was Brittany Danielle Withers. We put her to rest last week. Nobody should ever be turned away, especially when they finally break down and go voluntarily. And I believe there needs to be a policy in place for that.
Well, you know what? I would suggest you talk to people at Gateway. We fund Gateway, we don't run Gateway. And certainly, we see the need to expand, as I said again, or we'll say again, we know that there's a need. We recognize there's a need. That was not our initial focus. Hopefully, down the road, we'll be able to come up with sufficient resources to expand that service enough, so...
I pray that happens, sir.
Well, I pray it does too. I've had friends that have lost loved ones and others up here and throughout this audience have had the same situation, so we're not the enemy. We are, we are indeed trying to do the best we can with limited resources that we have. And everybody's got opinions about that, but...
I'm hearing, I'm hearing the name of love to try to get these policies changed.
That was, I think that's all of us up here feel the same way. Let the record reflect, we enjoy a councilman, is there? Okay, let's move along real quickly. Thank you for your comments. Tiffany?
Yes.
You got scared yet?
Well, we run into what may potentially be a... But, so, as I reported last time, immediately after one of the defendants, Marisaurus, removed the state court action to our local federal court, we immediately moved to remand the case back to state court. That motion has been fully briefed and was actually set for oral argument hearing in front of Judge Corrigan on October 24th. Meanwhile, however, efforts are going on at the multi-district level, panel level, and the defendants petition to have our case transferred conditionally along with cases all across the United States to the middle district litigation that's in the Southern District of Ohio. We have fully briefed and asked the panel to please hold back on making a decision regarding a full transfer into the MDL. Until such time, Judge Corrigan has an opportunity to rule on our motion to remand here legally. They have declined that. They have set us for hearing along with a whole bunch of other MDL matters on September 27th in San Francisco. They put us on the schedule for no oral argument, which pretty much means that they probably already have hit their minds, and they're going to go ahead and transfer us to the MDL with all the other statewide cases or nationwide cases. However, this does not mean, well, the result of that will be that the local case here will be state. So, Judge Corrigan will not have an opportunity to rule on the motion to remand if we are fully transferred to the MDL. The good news is that doesn't mean that we're going to stay in federal court. All that means is that we have to wait until such time that the MDL judge in the Southern District of Ohio decides how he wants to handle all of these motions to remain that have been filed all over the country. He may choose to keep them in his own court and rule on them himself. He may choose to send it back to the federal district that is electable and locally. It just depends on his discretion. So, that's where we are. So, we have not yet officially been fully transferred to the MDL, but it's likely to be...
Those in the audience that don't realize that the city council voted to encourage general counsel, direct general counsel or whatever it said, to engage in litigation, really to secure a law firm, I think, which is, that's well-schooled and suited for such an action. And they, they did, they've done so, and we filed against a number of opioid manufacturers originally in state court, which they don't want to be in state court, so they, as Tiffany has said, they've pushed it to federal court. We'd like it to stay in state court, so that's the legal maneuvering that she just shared with the, with all of us. It'll be a long, drawn-out thing, and we all feel like they're very responsible, obviously, for this epidemic. One of the people that I, I know who lost his 29-year-old son is a classic example of the fact that the young man started off with an injury and went from the injury to being up going, and then going to the street, and you know the rest of that story, passed away several months back, but, thank you, Tiffany.
I got a question.
Yep.
Mr. Galloway, Mr. Schellberg. A motion to remand, you mean a movement to state court, is that what that means?
Send it back to state court.
You kept saying motion to remand, but you didn't say to state court.
Yes.
And that's what you mean, because that'd be better for us, you think?
We believe that if we belong in our own, it will...
Okay, and if it is go to federal court, that we have less of a chance of doing well, is that what you're saying?
No, it's not that. It's that in federal litigation, mainly because of the size of the opioid litigation, it's nationwide. When you're in federal court, you're automatically in the multi-district litigation route. And so, we're just asking, we want our own case, we want to be able to pursue our claims, our own case. And whenever you are transferred over to the multi-district litigation...
Your third case.
That's right.
And it may or may not be at the state.
That's right.
Okay.
Courtney, help me out. MDL is what?
Multi-district litigation.
Right, okay. So, if we stay in state court, are we talking to other cities and counties to be part of this?
We have, well, we are, not necessarily to be part of our case, but we are definitely communicating with other municipalities within the state of Florida as well as throughout the United States.
And do they have similar lawsuits, I mean lawyers, or they're all distinct, most of them are distinct?
No, they, there's a handful of lawyers that are individuals from claims, first of all, different law firms. Our law firm, Scott and Scott, there's another law firm, the Holy School of it, Morgan and Morgan, there's several different law firms.
Morgan and Morgan, are they part of our...
Various claims.
No conflict?
Morgan and Morgan doesn't represent us, it's...
There was a, there was a city that sort of precipitated us getting engaged, because it was no end there. Delray Beach, Delray maybe?
It was Delray Beach.
Do you...
City of Delray Beach was the first one.
Yeah, do you have any idea what's, how they progressed, what's happened with them?
No, I don't, that's a very good question. I can come up with that if they...
Yeah, that'd be good, I'd like to know where their party is. And also, as I recall, this, this type of legal action did not allow for class action by cities and counties. They get jointly, for some reason, and I don't know now what the reason was.
We just simply didn't do it as a class action.
Right.
We have, we have very unique damages, especially being a consolidated government. I mean, we are the only consolidated government in the state of Florida, so we have very unique damages that would probably differentiate us from the consequences.
Yes, ma'am.
You're talking to a lady that's been sober for 32 years. I've worked many years with Gateway when we used to have success. And then they started the methadone program, which coupled the lawyers here made a fortune also. And now, they want to change it to another drug, if you're a real alcoholic and addict. And we need more places where someone can be detoxed. We need the help with our firemen, our policemen, because they've got a nightmare. And I've been cussed from one end to the other and threatened because we closed the drug house down at the corner of my street. And when you hold with beautiful little girls in your hands and their vibe, and you know, there are some things that we're doing. And I was in a meeting the other day, and I heard this young lady make this film. She didn't know full from being what she was talking about. And I was getting very angry. And I thought mine birthday, my anniversary, counselor, her brother, you know your brother was right there helping me along in a hard time of my life. And these policemen put their life on the line, and these EMTs, I'd say. But we have got to have someplace where we can detoxes. I've got a young man up in Tennessee right now. They let me go up to Reedsville and bring him down here for four days in my custody without any officers. And it's like a toll, you can't come back to this West Side and stay cleaning sober because all the prostitutes are going to be hitting, the drug dealers. And when you call the form, the policeman can get there, you have the drug dealers that's gone. And when one of the people was pulling me by my arm the other day, he didn't recognize me until I told him. I said, "You better not," and when he hurt my voice. And we've got a kingpin over in West Side at Central Princeton, but he's still got his downlands. And they're filtering the drugs through from North Carolina, from Mexico, Miami, Spain. You know, we've got to take a look at that. But we've also got to have a place for where they can really be detoxed instead of just being popped for another drug. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. I think that you, and I don't know, Courtney, I don't know if you've got the numbers or the update on the numbers, but I want to challenge the misconception that everybody that's in our program suddenly gets popped with another drug. That is not the case. We've got the statistics, so wherever you're getting that information, that information is grossly wrong. And what other people do about treatment, I can't speak to them. But I do know what we've been doing, and I don't get the impression from the last round of numbers that we're talking about any significant numbers of people getting popped with other drugs as treatment to this situation. But let me caution everybody, we've got an agenda here. At the end of the agenda, I've got some council members who need to leave because of conflict in the agenda. I've got an opportunity for communists to attend these, and I will afford that opportunity for as long as I can stay. I can probably stay beyond, beyond 3 o'clock for sure, so I will, I will let you all make any statements, questions, but I want to stick to the agenda. And with that, if we're finished, anybody else got any questions on the lawsuit?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name's Amy Danny. Is the lawsuit against Purdue Pharma?
There are one of the, there are one of the defendants, is our, aren't they, Tiffany?
Yes.
There are multiple defendants.
Okay, I was just wondering why we're suing them if we are willing to use another drug, bupanorphine, that is created by the same people?
Well, I don't know. If you're asking for a legal opinion, I guess Tiffany can answer that, but I don't, I don't...
I don't think I can. I don't know that that's it.
So...
You just said the news two days ago.
So, the Sackler Brothers, Purdue Pharma, is also, they own the patent for bupanorphine, and they also own Rhodes Pharma, which is where bupanorphine is coming from now. And it's the same as any...
She's holding it down.
So, if we're using...
She's going to have to hold it down.
Oh, sorry. So, if we're using, you know, if we're suing somebody for something, but we're willing to use the other drugs that they're creating, it makes no sense.
When you say the, I don't know who's prescribing those drugs, but is it somebody in the city of Jacksonville?
The bupanorphine is the detox medication that the Gateway detoxes a lot of addiction treatment centers.
I think that attorney would tell you that there's no correlation between the city filing a lawsuit against a particular entity and some other agency that is not part of the city using or doing something with respect to that drug manufactured product with.
Right.
So, I don't think that there's any conflict there, no. Not at all. Anyone else on the lawsuit before we move on? Chief and Lieutenant, want to talk, tell us where we're going?
Assistant Chief.
Assistant Chief, oh dang, have you been promoted again? I think we're going to call him Meteor.
Meteor. Actually, I won't let, I won't let Assistant Chief Riley speak to the trends because he prepared the data. Let me just make one big point, I have no knowledge of the lawsuit, but I just wanted to point out some of the pharmaceutical companies that produced oxycodone and oxycodone back in the days, the Phil Mills, also produce Narcan, it's the antidote to treat those, so they're, it's, yeah, it's capitalism at its best. It's expensive, giving lives. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that. But Mark, if you feel free to speak for the trends, and I'm going to, actually, it's okay, Chief, Councilman, I'd like to just talk a little bit about the Heroes Grant Program that I've applied.
Sure.
The Chair.
It's my green, press the button.
Am I allowed? All right, so I'll start with the good news. Your date, from January to August, last year, 2017, Jacksonville Fire Rescue treated 2,495 overdose patients. So, 2,495 from January to August of 2017. Year-to-date, January to August of 2018, were 1,997, so almost 500 patients left. That accounts for a 20% reduction in our responsive treatment to overdose patients. I'm not selling that as a big one, because if we look at what I would call the baseline of 2015, we're still a 7% increase over 2015. Year-to-date, 2015, we did 1,172, treated 1,172 patients. So, we still have a long way to go. If we'll ever be able to return to 2015 baseline. But year-to-date from last year, we're at 20% reduction, so we see that as a positive trend. And respectfully, if I may address Ms. Candy. Ms. Candy, thank you for your concern and actually pointing out. And as Chief Councilman mentioned, and my research tells me that bupanorphine and many of the other medications used for medication-assisted treatment, there's multiple manufacturers, and bupanorphine is also produced by Teva Pharmaceuticals, Sun, and by Mylan Pharmaceuticals. So, I don't know who would, you know, where they've been purchasing it from, but Rhodes and, or Purdue Pharma's not the only manufacturer of bupanorphine. To Mr. Lay, in your question about faith-based programs, I had the great opportunity this weekend to represent the fire department at a faith-based recovery treatment center, treatment option. And I would like to talk with you offline about that and tell you about the program, and also invite you, Katie, to join us in that conversation, since we spoke about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
One thing that was shared with me recently, and I know we've kind of got a little upheaval because a medical examiner has designed, but the numbers given to me on drug overdose deaths in 2017 was well over 600. And in the prior year, it was, what, 466, something like that, as I recall. So, while you... That's all the year.
In 17?
In 17. It jumped from 466, I think it was 466 to 6 something, 640, something like that.
You're talking about the debt.
I'm talking about deaths, which is what we are focused on. You know, I've seen the number go down, and that's wonderful news, that it's going down. That's a trend going, there's still 1,900 responses. And, and the original intent, as I said, when we started this community conversation, was, hey, we've got a lot of people out here dying, and it's four times the number of homicides in the city, roughly. And I started off with a picture of a young lady who was an attorney named Rose, who was 32 years old, who had been, who had worked in Jacksonville for the voting defender, in West Palm Beach with the state's attorney's office, and had gone back to private practice in West Palm Beach. And they found her about nine o'clock in the morning on the floor of her condominium bathroom, drug failure, paraphernalia, and an obvious heroin overdose that led to her death without anybody getting to her. And when you looked at her, you said, "Why? Why, why this kind of waste?" And of course, that's repeated and repeated over and over again. To the other issue that we raised too, was that we were seeing, our firefighters, as gentlemen did make mention of that, we're seeing our firefighters melting down. How would you like to be on responding to those kinds of calls, day after day after day after day? And thinking to yourself, why are these people doing this to themselves over and over again? So, we have compassion, a lack of compassion meltdown issue too, going on. Look, we can't solve it all. We're just, we're sticking our finger in the dyke just for the moment. We can't fix the, the issue that you raised about the, the after-melt-down care and the recovery part of it. We've talked about it, we know there's a need, we know there's a great need. These folks that I met that are running on their own a facility up in Nassau County, I was very impressed with them. I'd like to see some way, as we go on with this thing, that they're, they're doing treatment on a shoestring, but they're, I think they're very effective. And I'd like to see some way that we can expand something like that, maybe even get them into Dubal County if we can come up with resources. But right now, the resources are limited. Understand that we started off in one emergency room. In the upcoming budget, we're going to expand to seven emergency rooms. We aren't even fully covering the emergency departments in the city with, with the program that we're, where we're trying to stop people from dying. So, while you think the government can solve all your problems, the resources are stretched and limited, and we're trying our, our best to at least stop capitalism until we can expand. So, that being said, I'm going to allow Chief Talk Fighter Grant.
So, thank you, Councilman, the Chair. So, my annual pharmaceutical budget is just shy of half a million dollars for the entire department. And that's to purchase pharmaceuticals, every medication that we carry on, every 59 engines, squads, 13 ladder companies.
engines, squads, 13 ladder companies, 33 units and 50 or 50 units, um, so it involves a, a whole cache of medications that we carry. Narcan comprises about, in 2017, it was about 40% of my overall budget. So that gives you just sort of a snapshot of how much Narcan we're administering in relation to the overdoses that we're responding to. So, um, I, um, one of my roles as the Chief of Rescue is I attend quarterly EMS Advisory Council meetings for the Florida Department of Health and it gives me the opportunity to network and collaborate with other EMS chiefs throughout the state. Um, and back in July, we were notified by the state, uh, at our, uh, July meeting that they had, um, come up with a Heroes Grant Program, it stands for Helped Emergency Responders Obtain Support, you can Google it, it's on the Florida Department of Health website. And it's a $5 million competitive grant and it's based on your overdose response numbers. So we got this information, I was there July the 10th and they told us the, uh, the deadline was July 31st. And so we had to jump through a lot of hoops, uh, assist, my Assistant Chief, uh, Rowley over here really, really jumped through a ton of hoops to get our data corrected because the data that we were reporting to the state was not accurate. They had us at, at the very bottom, when in reality, uh, in 2017, we were number four, Dubal County was number four in the entire state of overdose responses and that number was 3,772. So, and you think about our population in comparison to Miami-Dade, we're probably half the size of Miami-Dade in population, but yeah, we're number four in the state. So the grant is based on the amount of your responses, so I did receive notification, unofficial notification that we had been awarded, um, based on our submission, we had been awarded a portion of the grant and, um, I have not got the number yet, but it should be commensurate.
It's like units, are we always asked?
It should be commensurate to our responses, um, but, um, you know, Narcan is very expensive and, and all the other medications, excuse me, the other equipment that we use, all these overdoses, it's not just, even somebody Narcan, it's, um, it's a BBM, it's an ET tube, it's an ID cap or it's electrodes and all the other stuff that we use. So these are very expensive calls that we respond to, very costly to the citizen, to the department, very costly to the taxpayer, so this is gonna be a huge help for, for our department moving forward. And I should have the, uh, the notification has been sent, I got that confirmation from our medical director this morning, as soon as I get that, I'm gonna update, uh, all the council members, but I'm anticipating somewhere a half a million dollars, I'm hopeful, uh, maybe upwards of that, that number, so, um, fingers crossed, but we haven't opened that grant.
Still taking a lot of Jileran.
Yeah.
Sure. Where's the money coming from again?
Well, it's the Florida Department of Health, um, and I don't know the actual source, it could, it could be traffic funds, uh, as far as EMS county grants funded through traffic citations, uh, it's possible, um, but, uh, this is the first year they've offered this grant and, uh, the anticipation that it's gonna get to you every year, so hopefully we can take with that funding.
Great. Anything else?
Counselor, the girl's pretty.
Yes, ma'am.
I know what he's talking about. I know what he's talking about and I appreciate these guys because I've seen them out there on the west side of town and I've got so frustrated because they run out of their pills and then they'll call rescue to go get them some more. And it's, I've seen it and I would like to say these, this, these children, I'm alive today and I'm very grateful for the firemen, if they get a call, they're right there for me because I never thought, don't you laugh either, Counselor, because then you're gonna round and round.
No, ma'am, I was not laughing.
No, what I'm about to say, I'm not gonna grow up gracefully, I'm gonna kick and fight and let you know, it's a worthwhile.
Um, thank you.
And I do appreciate you, even though we can argue that and forth.
Well, that's true.
But we do need to stake on our politicians to get some of these monies into this area to work on what we're talking about.
You, you, if you would, start working on state legislation, state government, because they are not funding us the way we need to be funded in addressing all of this and I can tell you quite candidly that, you know, they're, they passed through some money that came from the feds, but I don't think that we've gotten much in the way of state help that I've seen, so that's a good one. Yes, sir, in the back, you had to end up.
Yes, sir, um, you said the numbers went down, um, I was wondering what you attributed the numbers down, but the deaths went up, I mean, could that be the, you know, the dirty heroin that we're hearing more about, you know, like, why do you attribute the numbers going up and, and, and down as well?
Or do you wanna, you wanna give some responses now, I think I know what you're gonna say.
I just wanna, uh, to the Chair, I want a clarification, uh, the numbers that Council of Gallaudet was quoting were from 2017.
Yeah.
What are the numbers worth?
Yeah, but 2018, you said the numbers have been down, near the date, correct?
Our response, I mean, our response is down.
Okay, so if responses are down, what do we attribute that to?
Yes, sir.
And the deaths are up, what?
There's a culmination of things, so you have the STR funding, which is the State Chartered Response Funding, that gives Vivitrol through FADA and through the STR funding, Vivitrol and Buke for various different individuals, not just the PSL for whom the city's funding. Then also through PSL, we have noticed in our confirmatory urine, we have, we look at 10 different analogs of fentanyl, there's different potencies of the fentanyl. So before you had your straight fentanyl, now the majority of your drugs are being laced with acetaminophen, which is less potent, so they're not killing them as, they're not killing users as quickly as they would.
Oh, so the deaths have gone down, I thought the deaths went up, but the calls went.
They've gone down from 2017, if you look at the graph, that's 2015, we started and we find now going back down.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Um, I've, I've, I've looked at the numbers and it's hard to sometimes make sense of the fluctuations, um, and when you look at prior numbers, when you look at even seasonal fluctuations, you can bear in mind with Assistant Chief or whatever you are today.
For the Chair to answer your question, I'm, is your name, yes, sir?
Daniel Locke.
Daniel, Mr. Locke.
Yes, sir.
Um, looking at the medical examiner's report, their decedent information, um, last report I have is May, and what we're seeing is the top, or medical examiner, what they're seeing is the top three opioids, substances found in decedents are fentanyl number one, norfentanyl number two, and acetylofentanyl number three. And in 24 decedent cases, it looks like 21 had norfentanyl and five had acetylofentanyl in May. Uh, again, those three are still in, have remained the top three substances in the past three years according to the medical examiner report and according to.
I'm gonna interject that norfentanyl is a metabolite of fentanyl, so you can count that as fentanyl.
Yes. And there's also concern about the persons becoming, that are opioid aware, conscious, their bodies are not opioid naive and depending on what's out there on the street, the decrease in death may simply be a result of persons that know how much to use without overdosing. Um, if we see a spike or increase in our responses or deaths, then there is a concern that there may be a new strand, um, or a new release on the street that people are not used to taking and then hence they are naive and not.
Yes, sir. I was just asking Chief, I'd like, uh, Chief Lingate's not here, I'd like to find out what we're doing on the other end before y'all have to pick them up, where are the coming from? Have we seen an increase in particular?
We're talking about Lingate.
Lingate.
Lingate, he's, I don't know why he's not here.
Carol, did he, you get the Lingate, do you want to make it?
Chief Lingate.
And JSO?
I'm sorry, Lingate, yeah.
I didn't hear anything, you go just tell him.
I know, he's always been here, so I'm sure.
Yeah, I just wanna see what we're doing on the other side, as you were mentioning a little ago, where they're coming from. I think it's important that we're also, and I'm sure we are, to, to alleviate the numbers that are getting to Dubal County and how these people are getting these drugs, well, nobody, nobody does, and so, uh, that's.
With all due respect to the lady talking about the drug dealers out there, I'm online and if you've got a computer and a credit card, I promise you can buy fentanyl online, it's, it's a pretty difficult. I think, I think the dose I looked at, or the amount I looked at was 30 some odd. And they mail it in, I understand postal service, they, maybe Ron said that last time, they're working on a way where they can, I don't know how they would do it, but identify it in a parcel, but realistically, parcels coming in from overseas, unless it had some kind of scent to it, which I don't think it has, uh, it would be very difficult to tell that that's contained in that particular parcel. So I'm afraid the accessibility is a huge, still a huge problem. Um, all right, I don't have, um, as I said, don't have Chief here to talk about enforcement issues and successes, I hope he'll be here for the next one. We asked, we looked at, we went to an event at Walgreens, Walgreens is starting to set up kiosks for disposal and it, you know, it's just, it's, it's maybe not that major a thing, but it sure would be nice to be able to have disposal sites all over town. And so I asked Paige to do a little bit of research on disposal and I'm gonna let her report on that.
Thank you. I did look into, um, I believe your question when you talked at the last meeting was whether the city could do anything to require that more people become collection sites.
Right.
And I think the short answer to that is no, because the.
Wrong answer, go back to.
Well, I, I have some suggestions, but the, the short answer for you is no, and the reason for that is because, um, the, the federal DEA is the one that regulates these collection sites and so they've only approved three types of programs. One is the disposal bins, which are what you think about at the, um, drugstores or at the hospitals or clinics. They also allow for mail back programs where you can send things to companies through the mail, which I haven't seen a lot online and how you would get that, but I think maybe some pharmacies might, um, give that information to individuals. And then the third thing is, um, take back events with local law enforcement. And so interestingly, um, so these regulations came about after the 2010 Federal Secure and Responsible Drug Disposal Act. Um, it, it was promulgated through, through rules following that, that act. But the act itself allows for law enforcement to use any of those three methods, um, without having to follow the other regulations that the, like the Walgreens and the other books in the world would have to follow. And so I do think there is an ability to possibly work with JSO on the law enforcement aspect and the take back event aspect of it, um, just to kind of explain to you why, um, why I think that's a better approach is, um, so in addition to what I told you about the, the requirements for regulation, the, the disposal act that I mentioned from 2010 also stipulates that you can't require anyone to participate in the program and again, you have to be a certain type of, um, entity and it includes pharmacies, walk-in clinics, I think of some sort, um, and hospitals are, are the primary ones that are allowed. But they put so much restrictions on them in terms of allowing them to be disposal sites, they have to, um, modify their DEA registration, which they're registered with DEA to be controlled substance, um, facilities, and then they have to modify their registration to become a collector. They have to install, manage and maintain the disposal bins and sometimes they own those bins and sometimes they, um, rent them from other entities. And then they have to have someone come and pick up the, uh, the medication from those bins and they have to line them with certain types of protective liners that have certain identifications and so there's a lot of regulation that goes into it. So that is why for the most part, um, cost seems to be a prohibitive factor for many of the, um, people who can become these type of disposal collectors. Um, some of them range from a thousand dollars a year for the vent, for bin, um, to even, I saw in some articles quoted, $2,000 a year. So when you talk about the cost and then the, the records management, I think they have to keep their records for two years on, um, the disposal and where it's going and they have to hire an outside hazardous waste collector type person to take it away. So there's a lot of cost involved and that's why they don't, a lot of them probably don't. Uh, but I did find, um, you can look by, um, in Florida, you can go to the DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection website to find out where there are collection sites. They have a subsection, um, under DEP, which is called, I think, Pharmaceutical Waste Management or something along those lines. And if you click on that, you can put in your zip code and you can find out the facilities within your area. And I live in zip code 32207, which is south of downtown. I did the search and there were nine facilities, two of them were Walgreens and the others were all pharmacy type establishments, some of them I wasn't familiar with, but you can find a list of the ones that are near you. Um, and then in addition to that, like I said, the law enforcement agencies are able to accept them, there's a website you can check to see where the closest law enforcement agency is, and I use my zip code again, and it shows JSO as having, um, the Bay Street direct, um, facility as being, you know, accepting them. And also, um, I guess it checks within 25 miles, so it also pulled up Nassau County and said I could go to Nassau County. I know there's some concern that some people don't wanna take things to the police department because they feel like, you know, having the, the pills may in some way incriminate them. Um, so there's also the possibility of the buyback, not buyback, but the, the take back events. And so the DEA does national twice a year events for prescription drug take backs and the next one is actually October 27th of this year. So you may wanna consider speaking with JSO, um, and seeing what the city could do maybe to participate as a sponsor with either directing people to JSO or to any of the pharmacies by zip code, you know, put out the information that they can check by zip code to find out where they can take those, um, uh, you know, pills. But then the other aspect of this that I looked at that I, I don't have an answer for you yet, this would be something to look at, especially, I'm, I'm gonna talk to Tiffany about this. So since cost is an issue with the pharmaceutical, with, um, you know, the Walgreens of the world, um, some of them have received external funding for the cost and some of them have gotten money from manufacturers of these types of drugs. Um, sometimes it's voluntary through grants or other funding or state and federal type things, but there is also a push for something called Extended Producer Responsibility Legislation, which basically means it would, it would require either at the state or local level, um, kind of like a, a fee to the manufacturers, kind of like for batteries or paint, you have to pay a fee for the oil or, or whatever. So if, if the manufacturers paid, you know, $2 for every prescription they, they sold in Florida or whatnot, and have that money go to a fund that then could go to disposal sites. Well, I'm not sure about that, that's what I'm gonna find out for you.
Yeah, and.
That's what I'm gonna find out. I would suspect that's probably not local, but at a state level, I'm sure it's something that.
Well, my question is, my question is, uh, also, are you limited as to use of that money if you were able to do it? Could you use it for treatment?
I, since I haven't found any that have been enacted, I don't know what they can be used for, but that's part of what I'm looking at.
Okay, that you're gonna report back in the next meeting.
Yes.
That's fascinating, if you had that potential. And then did you turn some of your papers over to Colleen, she looks really bored? If she would come off the list of all of the drop off locations in Jacksonville that we could produce and, and go public with, that would be a good thing. Because I'm, I'm really amazed that there are that many limitations in those, so, my impression.
It's one of them.
My impression was there are only a few, but, you know, not being publicized, is it?
No, and that's, that's why I thought.
And the other thing that, that's interesting about that is if you, if you were able to produce those whips, if you give pharmacies to produce or to cooperate to the extent that somebody would be willing to fund the, the printing of all of those, if you were able to put one in each one of the prescription bags, if they were voluntarily putting in prescription bags on any opioid, opiate, uh, just to call it, but that would be something that would be worth pursuing. We have Colleen on the agenda next time and we have Paige on the agenda next time. Okay, Mr. Schellberg has leave, Poochie Dopey he did, we've gotten to the end of the, the list.
Thank you, sir.
To the comment section, so it's all you're hoping for. Doc, you got anything you wanna add? You seen anything that's worth my reporting? And I appreciate you, you've been great, so.
Yeah, I think to reiterate what Courtney said, I mean, the deaths that we were seeing all were when the patients first came in. So by, if we were able to save them from that first pass, this is where we're having an impact and after 25 years in the ED, you know, we can, we can split hairs on treatment perhaps or whether you, I, I can tell you how it's through the pill mill, you know, practice through the pill mills. through the pill mills and then methadone, not a fan of that as well, seeing a little different side of using an alternative chemical therapy here, but the thing is, at least getting the patients into treatment. Before, if a doctor or nurse went and talked to an overdose patient, I think terrible is what we have to say. Their, their goal is, when can I get out of here, because I'm gonna get sick? And how fast can you release me, or I'm gonna leave anyway? So some of the things we've learned during this pilot are how to keep these patients in the ED longer to help start their treatment, and also to have exposure to the peer specialists. That's really the magic piece of this, is someone speaking to the patients that knows how to speak, and that can relate to where they are at this point in time in their lives, and also with to their families. So we can talk about lots of pieces in this, but the part that's made a difference is the peer specialists.
And to reinforce that, Adam Putnam, who was not successful, obviously, becoming a Republican nominee, but he's the governor, but he was very sincere in his interest about this opioid crisis. Had a little session at Gateway, and they brought in the conference room there, and there were a number of folks, including people from the State's Attorney's Office, JSO, et cetera, and Dr. Palm was there. There's one young lady that came in who was in the program, and she pointed at the pure recovery specialist who was there and said, "I wouldn't be alive today if it wasn't for him." Because she was about to relapse, and he prevented that from happening. It wasn't, it wasn't an alternative drug, it was contact. It was same thing that some of you that are involved and trying to help do every day and see every day. So this is, this is, we're learning an awful lot from, from the program that hopefully will be beneficial into the future, but I appreciate everything you have done today and into the fut, into the future, because it's, it's still a crisis, it's still a huge problem. Who wants to offer something here? Where is yours? Yes, sir?
Hey, my name's Johnny O'Neill.
Hey, grab a, grab a microphone if you would, because we want it, the problem is to don't have a microphone, we have a hard time hearing you, Paulie, so, just pass that around. I've got a microphone up here, if you want to come up to the thing, I've forgotten about it, too.
My name's Johnny O'Neill. I'm an overseer and a counselor, and I treat people with addiction, and also, we're a men's discipleship program. I'm out of a program in Nassau County, not sure which one you were referring to earlier. I'm with Step Free by the State, and this is what we specialize in, man, I'm the, I'm the emergency room that nobody hears about. I suffered from a lifelong addiction to opioids, also went through mental health clinics and Suboxone. Came here with hopes to redirect some of the focus and funding, but I understand this isn't the meeting for that. I at least would like to maybe leave my information or speak with some people on or off the record about what we do, and if y'all don't have the funding to open doors and get people, you know, we get people off of drugs and into Christ, and we teach them how to cope with life sober, without drugs, and how to manage things that they use drugs to deal with. Anyways, I just want to say that, you know, I understand the funding isn't available, but I can at least leave my information with anybody here, and y'all can send them our way, or have them call us, or a five-month program, it doesn't cost anything, we run off donations, and we're working on a women's home right now as well, so there's, there's a lot going on, and I just wanted to offer that.
Well, I appreciate that. I think our hope is that we can come up with funding to help some of the people that are, that are doing good work, like you and others here in Duval County, that, you know, the problem is purely that, it's a matter, it's right now, it's a matter of funding, and we've turned our attention, our first focus is stopping the dying, that was, that was number one. We recognize that we haven't solved the problem, we've just temporarily prevented people from dying, so, I'd be very much interested in hearing your, or getting your information, and hopefully we're gonna start accumulating lists of folks that are engaged in doing things, and see if we can't come up with some help, help for them in the next couple of months. I can't remember off the top of my head, maybe Carol remembers, I can't remember the folks who came out of Nassau County, but what was it?
Step Free by the State, yes.
What, Step Free by the State, okay, well, that's good. I'm glad to see you back, I was expecting a return visit, but we didn't hook up, so that's good that you're back. And we even talked to them about maybe expanding into Duval County, because it'd be difficult for us to fund if you help with funding if you're in Nassau County, in this jurisdiction, yeah? I'd like to talk to you afterwards, okay? All right, with that, yes ma'am?
So, I have some questions. So, Gateway is a detox facility, and they're being detoxed with buprenorphine, is that correct?
Some of them.
Some of them, a small percentage, they have the choice, they get education on vivitrol to be more, and they get the choice of whether or not they want to proceed that. If we're being inducted into detox, that is now being changed in the procedures there, so now they're being detoxed back with an equality.
Okay, the last meeting, Dr. Palm stated that he has over 200 patients on buprenorphine. The last meeting, and I, I just want to, I, I think educate, education...
About buprenorphine, we have to put out...
We have more funding for vivitrol, so we're trying to avoid people on vivitrol because there's sober housing, sober housing does not allow, a lot of sober housing in the state does not allow for buprenorphine, so we don't want to bottle that people there. So we're, because, and I just want to say, I just want to state that rehab facilities don't take people on buprenorphine because of this, buprenorphine is an opiate, everybody. I just want everybody to know that. It is just as addictive as methadone, oxycodone, everything, I, I have personally dealt with it. So, vivitrol, speaking of vivitrol, when you take, when you get a shot of vivitrol, or you can take it orally, however, when you take it, you can skip the next dose, and you can be so high, as a fact. Then you can take it the next day, and you can be sober, and then the next day, you're just as high as ever. We are, this is just, it's a vicious cycle that is going on, when you can be, when all this can be done with changing of the mind.
Amen.
To, you have, so when somebody is a drug addict, and they start taking drugs, their mind stops working. Me, I was 15 when I started. I went through the Suboxone, I went through everything, I did six months in a rehab, and I had to rewire my brain, I had to learn tools. And if you don't have the tools, you're going back to death. And Suboxone, Vivitrol, everything is just like, it's, it's, the inevitable is coming. You know, the deaths may be down now, but in a year from now, I guarantee you, they're gonna be back up.
Amen. Yes, sir, in the back.
I'll just speak real loud. My name is Daniel Locke, I own a medical marijuana physician group, and the only thing I can tell you guys is what my patients are telling us. I, I, I can't attest to it clinically, all I can tell you is the feedback that we're getting. I've got patients who are, A, I used to be hooked on, on opioids, now I'm off, I'm using med, I want to use medical marijuana. Or, B, I'm using them, and I don't want to get hooked on them, so I want another option. Or C, I'm living with chronic pain because I'm afraid of them. So obviously, I can't speak, my patients are not to the, where Gateway patients are, is my guess, okay? We've been at this since November, and we learn new every day, but the patients are coming in, and they're screaming from the mountaintop, this is working. So, I would, I offer, you know, I own the practice, I also run the day-to-day operations, and my wife is the physician. So, I offer anybody who wants to come and with their permission, meet with any of our patients and hear it from them. So I don't know what, you know, where our product comes in and is maybe of a preventive going forward, I don't know those answers, I'm not smart enough, don't have enough experience with it.
Well, with respect, I have to yield to medical professionals, I think there's also some weaknesses, but Courtney, you want to share your observations?
There are, we cannot prescribe it at Gateway because it is still scheduled one drug...
Correct.
And for different credentials and for different licensing, you can't do that. Also, there's not enough peer-reviewed research for Dr. Palm to feel great about it.
That's what I'm asking.
But as, as far as you saying that they're not at Gateway level, Gateway, as well as a lot of other treatment facilities, are currently in a change process where we're looking at recovery on a continual...
But what I'm asking is, could your folks interview our patients?
They do.
Not asking for you...
They already do, they're coming with their cards, they're already on medical marijuana and...
Oh, is that right?
...do it on a case-by-case basis.
Feedback.
We, we look at recovery on a continual, we are an abstinence-based program, our ultimate goal is for everyone who has abstinence, so we will work with people where they're currently at.
I understand. Yeah, abstinence, I don't understand that other reason.
So, in order to keep people alive, to get them the tools, to get them to be completely clean and sober, you have to work with them where they're at. Not everybody's willing to be at that place at this point in time.
But the ones that are, what's the feedback?
The ones that are on the...
The ones that you're measuring, that come in with medical marijuana cards, how, how are they doing?
I am not the one that's seen them, so I think...
That would be real neat information to share with everybody, yeah.
Just say one thing, I went through, I'm sorry, I went through, I personally went through at least 10 hypnotic methadone clinics in Duval County and battled the Suboxone thing, and I understand what y'all are trying to do with that, and, but, one thing, if it's a means to, if we're gonna, I'm not, I know we're not gonna stop putting it out, but can, okay, here's what happened to me, I go there to get help, they start me on a low milligram, and every day I went back, they raised it, and then I became immune to that and needed more and more, and then when the Suboxone and Methadone, if I couldn't get to the clinic one day, I was out there trying to get heroin and robbing still, it, it actually made my pill habit turn into a heroin habit because of what they did in the Suboxone, it should be used in a short scale, and you should start them and decrease, not start them here and then build them up and then set them back, and then you can't even get back in to get help from what they put you on.
And the drug dealers are selling the Suboxone, too.
It's horrible. I just wanted to note that, maybe in the notes, we could adjust the scale on how that drug hit person behind you, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Alexis, and I work for Sunrise Detox, but I'm also long-term, in long-term recovery myself, and I was actually, you know, coming in as a 12 stepper and being abstinence-based, it's been, you know, as the new medical recommendations come out, it's been like a little change for me, and I'm having to evolve with times. Most importantly, to save lives. I just lost my very best friend in June, and you know, initially, it was that 12-step mind that said, "Stay off that Suboxone, stay off that Suboxone." He went off the Suboxone, he didn't do anything to work on changing his behaviors and, and, you know, and include treatment as he went, you know, as he went forward. Now I look back thinking, you know, maybe had he been on that a little bit longer while he was really making some changes in his life, and seeing those behavioral changes occur, then you start coming off slower. So, you know, it's, it's really a case-by-case, and like she just said, it's just meeting that patient where they're at is so important. It can't, this is not black or, but black and white, it's not. So, it's just really important that we just are aware of that and look at that, you know, to each individual. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Let me explain something to all of you for just a minute. I want you to put yourself in my shoes for just a minute. I gave you a little bit of background of why this thing, how this thing got started, how I got involved in it, and I was able to get my fellow council members to agree to over a million dollars to fund the program. They're now agreeing to fund it in seven different emergency departments over the next year. I am not a medical professional, I have no personal experience with addiction, don't have anybody close to me that can tell me about addiction, I'm not schooled in addiction, I'm just a council member, period. I have to yield to a certain amount of professionalism, a medical professionalism, which brought me into contact with Dr. Palm. Now, you may or may not agree with him, you may not agree with him based on experiences that you've had personally or with other people, but I'm not going to take and, take a wild ride over the horizon with some speculative experiences and not yield to the medical professional that until now has been doing government work, as far as I can tell, whether you like his methodology or not, he has done what we've asked him to do. Everybody in his program has not died. Let me say that one more time, since we started the program, nobody has died, we've had some reoccurrence, nobody has died. Get that through your head, okay? That is exactly what we are going to continue to do. Now, if we can expand and get into the treatment side of it in a more meaningful way, and I can get my colleagues to fund it, by damn it, I'll do it. But right now, I'm getting a little bit tired of the continual haranguing about what we are attempting to do, because I can show you results. You can speculate all you want about it, but I can show you results for our program right up to now. So that's the way we're gonna continue to do it, I'll be glad to talk to any of you, I'll be glad to help you any way I can, if we can expand the, the treatment side of it, by darn it, we're gonna do it. But that is exactly where we are right now, and that's where we will continue to be for the remaining nine months and so many weeks of my, my office holding, and then after that, so you're gonna have to look for somebody else to step in, because my term is up, and I will no longer be on the city council. Yes, ma'am?
Counselor, go for one thing, Gateway can only go to a certain extent, and the gentleman back here says that. A lot of these addicts and alcoholics have AIDS, hepatitis C, and Gateway and AIDS are not medically qualified to handle some of these. I've had to deal with them, and this gentleman back here with the fire department, a gentleman on that street, they've taken him to the emergency room, they've given him a shot of morphine, he came up alive, and then he jumped off the table and back on the street, the right one. So you can always do, but we have a lot of AA club house, we have AA meetings, and AA meetings, which are very effective, but I would like to see, I can feel it, that it's more medically qualified than him, some of the things that's more detailed, and I've put a lot of years in Gateway, and, but, they can only do so much, and after meeting, I want to say...
There's a lot of other effects, there's probably nobody in this room that has seen more people die than I have in the last 47 years working in the emergency room. The takeaway is not necessarily on all the different types of treatments, I guarantee you, I can agree, there, there are people that have gone cold turkey that I've watched. Picking those particular patients out, if you can do that, is very, very tough, and watching the patients that are on this new issue that we're having now, and looking at the deaths quadruple is one of the reasons why the city council said, something's gotta be done. Right now, we're doing a fantastic job identifying and catching these patients in the emergency room, so they don't come in three or four times in one day. Once we get them started, you can make an argument about what the particular treatment modality is, and we look at all of them, we do vivitrol, you, some don't get anything, and whether medical marijuana may be a good choice down the road, I'm not an expert on that side of it to say, but I can tell you, now, I think there's lots of ways to treat, but the first thing is identifying them and getting them into treatment, which is what we were wanting to start with this pilot, is what we've been successful doing. So it's not fair to argue that substituting one drug for another, and I do agree, we've done a horrible job on a lot of ways with that, you know, I see these people come in for a decade, I say, "You're supposed to be getting off, why are you taking it on up to 10 years?" And, and looking at what Gateway is at least trying to do, and I've spent a lot of time there, they're, they're, they know there's a limitation on space, there's just not enough beds for behavioral health, or for addiction, so they're actually doing escalated protocols where you only treat for this period of time, and then you're ratcheting down. We can make an argument that we're really ratcheting down... We can make an argument that we're really ratcheting down way too fast. If you talk about how long people's sensorium is clouding when they start on this drug, how long before they're cleared and think properly in a 12-step program to make the right decisions and get reacclimated into churches and schools and with their families? It takes a long time. Dr. Palm will tell you, it takes two years. I don't know what the real answer is, but it's a long time. So you have to treat these patients, I'm not saying they should be on chemical treatment for two years, maybe you need two months, three months. These are the things that we're learning. So nobody's gonna sit here and say, even the experts in this field have all the answers on this, but right now, getting them identified, getting them off the street, looking for that next fix two hours later is where we start. So I can't argue with you about treatment. I can tell you right now, this project and what we're attempting to do has been remarkable. In fact, the whole country has been watching this and they're trying to emulate what we've done in Jacksonville. That's something to be proud of.
How about the city or whatever take and do away with the $400,000 that we got for a dog park and put it towards treatment programs?
Well, I tell you what, why don't you talk to your, talk to your district council member and ask him that? Now, you're not in my district, but you ask him what he'd do about that, all right? But you're talking about 19...
The last one took our money.
You took, you're talking about, you're talking about...
Terrence Freeman.
When you talk about 10, you're talking about 10 votes to do basically anything with respect to spending money. But instead of being, approaching the negative, I'll ask you a question. Where would we be today had this council not gone ahead and approved that appropriation to start this program and to continue it for another year and expand it? That might be rhetorical.
There would, right, because there'd be a lot less drug addicts on the street.
Yeah, because they'd be dead.
But we're playing God.
Ma'am, we're getting into a philosophical conversation that probably doesn't help any of us as far as what we're attempting to do. This is, this is a program, this is a program that we are trying, are desperately to save lives, and to date, we have done that. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanna say, I agree, and I thank you very much for what you guys are doing. I know the hospital down in St. Petersburg is doing the same thing, and they're seeing a lot of really good results. So I just wanna say thank you. I, Operation Park, yeah, that's it.
Sir, I'd like to say something.
I just see it, I see it very, very positive, but my other question was, and I'm not sure if it's going on around here, my facility is in Orlando, although we do pick up and transport in this area a lot, we're a standalone detox. But are you guys doing any, like, Narcan trainings, or is that accessible for the public? You know, and how, and how frequently? Because realistically, a lot, you know, you're finding out that it's the addicts that are helping the other addicts, you know, to save their life while they're in, while they're using. So I just see that that has also been a big help as well throughout the different communities. But no, I appreciate what you're doing, and anything we can do at this point to save lives, it's not like let the addict hit bottom anymore. You, you know, 10 years ago, you could do that, you hit bottom. Today, it's you use, you die. There's, you know, it's, so any way you can get them into treatment or saved, or, you know, save their life and detox them, any way you get them there is how, is how it has to happen, if not, they're dead. And that's just the way it is today, it's totally different than it was, than 10 years ago.
So to answer your question, we're actually giving out Narcan to all individuals that come into contact with any peer in this program. Also, Narcan training is gonna start happening through Drug Free Duval. They need to find a place that had a pharmacy dispensing license that would be able to do it as part of the training, and I believe they're working with Charles Blacker to make that happen. I don't know if it's been finalized at this point or not. So Drug Free Duval will be doing trainings out in the community for individuals for the Narcan.
We've actually been there.
And hence, sir, your philosophical question, if treatment centers and us contact people get these addicts and alcoholics in, alcoholics anonymous, the BIP, narcotics anonymous, and 12 steps and 12 provisions, it will automatically revert back to God.
Thank you. Last, last question, and then we're gonna... Yes, sir? Yes, sir? Sir, I just wanna be able to help be part of the change with this program and what you guys are doing. These, this is a step forward, okay? My whole thing is, nobody should ever be turned away for treatment, no matter what. I don't disagree with that. And that's, to me... Reality, you know, the reality, and we, as I said before, we've had discussions about... Well, I'm here... The reality is that there's limited resources and that you're absolutely right, but... I, I, I'm looking forward to working with you in any way possible with me and my network to help make a difference. Okay, but see if you can get the state to help us with some additional funding on free access. Yes, sir. Be a great step. Amen to that, brother. Okay, well, thank you all for being here, I appreciate all of you, and whatever you're doing to help, so we are adjourned. God bless you, sir. We gotta get somebody to take a picture of us. Here, we're here at City Hall, just got it out and done with the city council meeting. It went very well. We all got to speak our mind and our voice, and hopefully this will be the beginning of change. This young lady right here was using a microphone. Opioid epidemic. Yeah, can you take a picture of all of us, please? That'd be great.